Call the regular city council meeting December 5th to order at 6:32. There is, everyone is here except Amanda, Amanda couldn't be here tonight. Everyone else is here, so we do have a quorum. Next item up is pledge of allegiance. Well, first of all, I want to introduce this group. The, many of our citizens here got together and they formed a history committee under the auspices of the Clear Lake Shores Civic Club. And they've been working really hard to preserve the history of the island and all of the documents and everything else that they can pull together. And one of the, out of this is, one of the things we've come to do is we've got a hold of the Sam Houston chapter, the Daughters of the American Revolution. And they're going to present today a special award to Clear Lake Shores for the preservation that we've done of this clubhouse. So I would like them to come forward at this time.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I'm Rita Ash and I'm the Region of the Sam Houston Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. And we have an excellence in historic preservation award for you. And this has to do with, in 1927, the Houston Post-Dispatch newspaper threw out the sales of the Cabana lots located on an undeveloped peninsula in northeastern Galveston by selling them for $69.50 each, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. And with that came a six-month subscription. My husband and I even looked around here, tried to figure out how to get in on that, but we didn't. So, anyway. This clubhouse was built by New York company, William &amp; Arthur Schmodbeck, Inc. Here prospective buyers gather and here they continue to gather until they become owners. The building went from clubhouse to home of social activities to city hall with the incorporation of the city in 1962. And back to the clubhouse in 2001 when city and police administrative offices, facilities were moved to the new building across the street. It is still used for weekly court sessions, city council, other committee meetings, as well as civic club meetings and activities. Mayor Cronystar, as a member of the Sam Houston Chapter, NSDAR, is my pleasure to present you and Clear Lake Shores City Council with this excellence in historic preservation certificate and pin.
Okay, thank you all very much. Y'all have a great evening. Okay, next item up is reports from council. Councilman Ed Waters, Santa Claus.
I just want to say, want to thank the civic association did a fantastic job. We had a great turnout and it was a lot of fun Sunday night. And I enjoyed myself too.
Alright, thanks Ed. Rick Fisher?
No, ditto on that. The turnout for the tree lighting, especially on Sunday, was incredible and so was the parade. As far as parks and pool, no meeting this month, it's kind of a slow month. Mary's here, so I'm going to let her give the update for that. But in the same vein with parks and pool, for those of you that missed it, on Sunday, we did do the unveiling and the dedication of the bench for Craig Ward and his memory out there in Charbo. If you haven't had a chance to go by and take a look at it, take a look at it. Rob did an amazing job putting that in there, just in location. Craig always enjoyed the, just the peace and serenity of the water, so it faces the water. But at the same time, it's, you can still hear the music coming out of the pavilion when they do a Chaminon Charbo or any other music event. So, it's, it was a really touching ceremony. Ranelle did a fantastic job putting together a little, I'd say get-together and a party just for family and friends and anybody else that showed up. So, anyways, if you get a chance, go take a look at it. It's a really nice addition to the park.
Thanks Rick. Jeff Terrell?
There you go. Well, I missed the tree lighting on Sunday. Unfortunately, I had to work, but I do appreciate the civic club. I saw the pictures, looked like a great time and hopefully continue that on next year and I'll be able to make it. Just thanks to everybody that made that what it was.
Thanks Jeff. Alex Scanlon?
I'll echo those sentiments. The tree lighting was great, both, well, round one and two. Had a good time at. Round two was definitely, definitely better. The Sunday thing was great. It's been a busy month for me somehow during the holidays for the city, which has, which has been nice. So, got a lot of things on, on the agenda that we'll, we'll get to. It's not going to talk about them here. And then I had Johnny, Boltinghouse, Brad and Randy join me out up here by the bridge. So, all those guys are helping out, helping me get the pedestrian bridge project, taking a small step forward. So, you know, some progress is better than none. So, hopefully we can see that happen, I don't know, maybe this year. We'll see. That's all I have.
Thanks Alex. Amanda's not here. So, I'm going to ditto all of that. I mean, we had a fantastic turnout. We had the mayor from KEMA over here. She sent me a text later and said, "Wow, thanks for letting us come. This thing was awesome." So, I don't know how many golf carts we had. We had 30-plus golf carts. There were some really cool ones that won some awards. I noticed, by the way, you didn't put a sticker on our golf cart. Why was that? disqualified me before I ever got in it. But, you know, David's not here, but Chet did an amazing job at traffic control. We appreciate you leading our parade, Chet, as always. The fireworks were phenomenal, you know, almost as good as the boardwalk, actually. We had some really good fireworks. We got some really good pictures of those fireworks that we could post. And, you know, thank you Diana for all the hard work you do too. But, like I was saying that night, I don't know how many of you were here. It's a collective group of people that make everything happen. From the team setting up here to the team setting out there with all the volunteers and, and all the people who pitch in around here. You know, there's a lot of people that help. So, we appreciate all of you. I gave a shout out to Jorge that night and Odie because they do the work of six people. We only got to pay them for two. They don't get paid enough, but they do a really good job. I don't know if you noticed, but you have a new lockup there today, by the way. I think we texted you the code. But, that's really all I had. The Christmas tree lighting was great. We are going to have, coming up this weekend, we're going to have the boat parade. So, it's going to be crowded. Let your friends know and your family know that if they're going to park in the right of way, they need to be off the road. Because we won't be able to get vehicles down the streets if they're not off the road completely. So, there will be people calling tow trucks to tow the cars if you're blocking people's driveways. So, be careful, warn everybody that's coming. That's going to happen. You know, there could be some tickets written, don't be surprised. We're going to have a lot of people here. I don't know that, what KEMA's going to do yet. We haven't heard anything. But, the last time they put a plan in action, we got really crowded with people. We took some actions to kind of mitigate that. Can't really shut all the roads down, but we can warn people and, and we can take proactive measure on that. So, you know, Chet will be out there along with many others taking care of that for us. The other thing is, this Thursday, we're having our city staff party to reward and thank those that do a great job for the city. We will be closing the city hall at 3 o'clock. And that will reopen the following day. We're going to close at 3 o'clock so everybody can get to that party on time. Don't miss that party. And that's really all I got. Thank you all for being here. It's nice to see kind of a crowd out here instead of two or three people. So, thank you all for being here. Next item is Police Chief David Donaldson. Will, will we defer to you, Chet?
Thank you. Mayor and city council, got the stats for November. Traffic contact, contacts were 131. There were narcotic offenses were two, accidents four, assault, family violence one, total arrest eight, disturbances were six, thefts were four, undesirables four, assist other agencies five, residential checks 135, alarm calls three, and welfare checks nine, and bar checks 468.
Okay, thank you, Chet. Next up is City Administrator Bragg Alley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm probably going to get in trouble for this, but I'm going to step out there anyways. I'm always afraid of highlighting any volunteers because there's so many that do so many wonderful things on this island. However, I did notice while we're getting ready for this, there was one person that was putting a lot of hours in that's getting the lights up on the bridge, the city hall, on the tree and everything. And I'd like to recognize Diane Cronystar for all your hard work on this. Just a couple of updates that I've got. One, I'm going to start off with some good news. And keep in mind, when I say good news and talk about Texas Park and Wildlife in the same sentence, it's usually a response to an email. But, I think our last meeting, I did report that the Section 7 report had been finalized and turned back into them to advance on our grant for the boat ramp. We did get feedback from Fish and Wildlife Services. They did have some additional information requesting. And I guess we've got to demonstrate our impact on our manatees. So, we're working on that and that will help close our, close that out so we can advance the grant onto the construction portion. So, kind of excited to actually see that they're engaged and we're still getting some interaction. Did want to kind of highlight, and Councilmember Scanlon mentioned that we did get together and talk about the footbridge and the sidewalk. Some exciting conceptual things going on there. And I'd really like to recognize the time that he's putting in on this. His engineering expertise is really saving the city a lot of money and doing, setting us on the right track. So, thank you for that and pull that together. Last of the, last time I mentioned, you probably see crews showing up for doing crack sales on the roads and be around. We're still waiting on final bids and proposals on that. So, the reason you haven't seen any action there. So, as soon as I get that, we'll be moving forward on getting some action on that done. But, one other thing that we're coming up, agenda item is master service agreement with the engineering firm, which is going to kick off a lot of other exciting things for us. And I'm going to save that till we get to that agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Next up is roads and drainage. And I was helping get things ready, so I'm going to let you report on that.
Well, I was getting things ready for the first Christmas tree lighting while that meeting was going on, so I was also not there. I think Brad, were you there?
Just a quick brief, we do have a lot of things that we're looking and getting lined down. A lot of that is our surveys on our drainage and looking at a lot of issues there. So, needless to say, I did get a few more hats stacked on top of the others I've got going on. But, a great bunch of committee members that are engaged and looking forward to moving things on.
Alright, thank you, sir. Parks and pool?
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to take a few moments to say a few things. This month, a lot of it was already said. There's not a lot to report, especially since, since the last parks and pool meeting that we had, which was November 14th, councils met. And so, thanks to Rick, he reported a few things there. But, the biggest thing I wanted to stop on, we had two new members to our committee since then. And there's two special people on our committee that I think deserve a round of applause. And that's Halle Brown and Chris Richardson because they have dedicated a very long, long, many years to this committee. For some of you that don't know, I think they were here like pre-Ike when it was two different committees. It was a park committee and a pool committee. So, that right there takes a lot of dedication to stay and be, you know, putting a lot of hours and sweat and hands in their dirt, you know, fingers in the dirt and planting flowers and all the things that they do. So, I know Halle's here tonight, so I just wanted to say thank you. And, other than that, we're not going to have a meeting in December. Obviously, it's not the best time to be out there planting new flowers, but we are going to work on cleaning up a few beds and some bed shrubs and things like that, getting ready for springtime. And, other than that, our next meeting's January 9th at 1:00 PM. So, we've changed meetings to be during the daytime. Works a little bit with a lot of our schedules better. And anyone's welcome to join if they would like to. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is waterfront compliance. Anybody here from waterfront?
Nothing to commit on that this month, other than if we have anything updated on those three lots over there on the west side. And I don't know of anything that's been done there.
I don't know that we've done anything with that. We'll follow up on that. Thanks Ed. Next is planning and zoning.
Mayor and council, planning and zoning had a meeting back on November 6th. In that meeting, we appointed a chairperson, myself. We avoided, appointed a vice-chairperson, that was Charlotte Jones. We also had new business we reviewed and approved, replot of northern 20 of lots, 1368 through 1371, and all of lots 1372 through 1375, and 1406 through 1410. These are the lots over, I think it's Narcissus and South Shore, or West Shore, over all of them. So, there was quite a bit. It's a big lot that's been cleared off over there. So, that was reviewed and approved. Any questions? And zoning board of adjustments has not had a meeting in quite a while, so we haven't had any requests for variances.
Next up, civic club report.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I have quite a few things to go over. First of all, with regards to the tree lighting, I know a lot has been said, but I want to thank the city, council members that were in attendance, everyone's help in trying to pull Thursday night off and then doing the second half on Sunday. We greatly appreciate it. Jorge and Odie, a special thanks to them. Ed, thanks for stepping in and being our Santa Claus on Sunday night. So, the people that weren't able to make it out Thursday night, they could at least get pictures with their kids. So, we greatly appreciate it. Chief Donaldson, I'd like to thank him for the cocoa on Sunday night. He came through so that we could have that again. All the cookies that were donated, there was not a cookie left by the time we were finished. There were a lot of people out there Sunday night. I also want to thank Diana Cronystar for all of her work in making that happen out there for us to be able to even have the Christmas tree lighting and all the beautiful decorations here on the island. Thanks to Mary and her team for the beautiful indoor tree. We have a lot of beautiful ornaments and I'm glad that Mary and her team put that together this year for us. On, our, our next meeting is this Thursday. And one of the things that's going to be on our agenda is forming a Christmas committee through the civic club to assist with manpower and funding for holiday decorations and things like that, to see if we can help out. Because it's a lot of work. I mean, everything, all these events that we put on here in the city are a lot of work. And the Christmas tree decorations, I think Diana was out there three to four weeks. It's a ton of work. And we need some more manpower to get out there and assist and get everything ready to be installed. And we also have some older things that need to be replaced. So, the civic club's going to step in and form a committee to try to help offset some of those costs. The food and toy drive boxes that we still have here, those are going to be delivered after the end of the week, so if anyone has any additional donations they want to make. Next, we have the refurbished benches that we had done. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to look at those, but they are absolutely phenomenal. We were checking prices because last year Santa told us we had to have a new bench because he wasn't going to be able to sit on that one safely again. So, I was, when I tried to schedule him this year, the first thing he asked me was about the benches. So, I came to the clubhouse checking to see measurements and things. And the frames and everything looked in great shape, other than needing painting. And the cost to replace them even remotely close was astronomical. And so, I want to give a big thanks to Frank Temburella, who stepped up and made our benches more beautiful than they could have ever been. I've not stopped talking about those benches. So, thank you so much. And Frank gave us a great deal. We could have never purchased the benches in that condition for what you did for us. So, we greatly appreciate it. The adult Christmas, progressive Christmas party is this Friday night. The information's been posted on the Facebook page as to locations if you want to join in that event. Upcoming events after the first of the year, we have pancakes and the Dumbo cook-off coming up. We will be talking about that further after the first of the year. Also tonight, I was going to make a presentation, but I'm just going to make an announcement for it since Chief Donaldson is not here and the KEMA volunteer fire department is not here. Each year for the National Night Out, the civic club raises money to make donations to the Clear Lake Shores Police Association and the KEMA volunteer fire department. We will be giving checks for $445 each to, each of those organizations as our donation to them from the National Night Out funds raised. So, thank you.
Thank you, Georgia. Okay, next up, economic development.
Mayor and council, we had our regular meeting last month and we appointed our officers. Can you hear me alright? Oh, okay. We appointed our officers and we also voted to make applications a little bit less restrictive and put it in line with the state's recommendation for applicants for economic development corporations. Our regular meeting this month is a week from today, on the 12th. It's a pretty, pretty light agenda, but there could be some things maybe later on, on this agenda that could come up, so we'll probably have them on there. If there's anything you want added, you know, be sure to let us know. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Johnny. Alright, next up is public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the city council if the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda. The comments may be made now or at the time of the agenda item as discussed. If the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the city council may not, or cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from the public shall be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual. Our attorney was here when we had a meeting and people kept saying, "Well, I'm going to let them have my three minutes. I'm going to let her have my three minutes." He said, "We can't do that. That three minutes is for each individual only, so you can't grant someone else your time so they can talk for 20 minutes." So, he added that on there. It says, "No yielding of time is permitted." So, let's, please don't do that. We don't want to get in trouble for that. So, at this time, if anybody would like to speak to the council, we do have a clerk. Who's, anybody? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Linda Machowski, 1019 North Shore Drive. I've been a resident of Clear Lake Shores for almost 35 years. I've attended city council faithfully for 19 years. During this time, I have witnessed and I've been a recipient of fraudulent deeds perpetrated by corrupt city officials. I have stood before city council many times, relaying this information. It has recently come to my attention that some may be confused in thinking that I am speaking about our current mayor, Randy Cronystar, and city administrator, Bragg Gooty. I am here tonight to clarify that this is not the case. I have known Randy Cronystar for close to 30 years and I know that he is a kind, honest, and man of his word. Additionally, I have met with Mr. Bragg Gooty on multiple occasions and I find him to be a sincere and straightforward individual, probably the best city administrator the city of Clear Lake Shores has ever had. In conclusion, again, any of the issues that I have brought forth, referred to concerning corruption with city officials, have not been with either Mayor Randy Cronystar or city administrator Bragg Gooty. There has been a lot of corruption in the past. And currently, with false elevations submitted to FEMA. These two men are not a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else?
Hello. My name's Mike Paddit. I live on 818 Cedar Road. And, so my wife, Darlene, had helped decorate the bridge with Christmas ornaments and so on and so forth. And if I ask her how it went, she said, "Well, it was productive, but they were always dodging traffic." And, so I see that almost on a daily basis when I, you know, you can drive a golf cart over a bridge, there are families walking over the bridge and, you know, individuals. More often than not, the families are walking over there and they're trying to, you know, keep Junior or Little Missy with them and they've got their hands, you know, locked into theirs. And the kids want to rebel, you know, and they pull loose and they start to run away. And, so I guess my point is that, Alex, I didn't know you were working on that pedestrian bridge. But that's something, I mean, I'm coming to these meetings, I didn't know that. But that's something that really needs to be done. And probably yesterday, because we really have a liability here with people walking over that bridge. In its heyday, last summer, when Soul Freak was doing a lot of business and the parking lot was full, I saw a lot of cars parking in here in this lot. And they were walking across the bridge as well. They were walking across the bridge at night in order to save the $5 parking fee at Skipper's. And, you know, it gets pretty perilous walking across that bridge at night, particularly at 1:00 or 2:00 AM. So, as far as pedestrian bridge, that's something that should have went in years ago. And, you know, it was just a liability out there every day. If somebody gets, you know, hurt or killed on that thing, we're looking at a $15 million lawsuit and then a, you know, a funding bond issue to help pay for that. And they'll raise taxes. So, this is something that really needs to be on the front burner, not so much the pickleball court or anything like that. So, anyway. Good work.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address council? Alright, if not, we're going to close out the public comments. We're going to move on to the next item. Consent agenda. I do, I do want to remove this waterfront transfer. There's an item that's wrong with that, so we want to pull that and put it on the next meeting. And they're well aware of what that is. So, Kristi informed me of that just before the meeting. the meeting. So, other than that, um, we want to make a motion to approve what else is on.
All right, well, you answered my question there, so I'll make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A and B.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, got a motion from Rick, got a second from Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor? Almost voted again. Okay, motion passes unanimous. Uh, next item is old business. Uh, item A. Uh, well, discussion of possible action may be taken on the following items. Item's A, consideration and possible action regarding the proposed mutual benefit, or beneficial agreement among Clear Lake Shores Plaza 1006 and Frank Tamburella regarding the city possibly granting a limited consent to encroachment to Frank Tamburella for the property at lots 19 and 20 on the Clear Lake Shore subdivision located at 822 Clear Lake Road, in exchange for Frank Tamburella granting public access easement to Plaza 1006, public transportation to construct and maintain a sidewalk fence landscaping on said easement with the purpose providing a public walkway from the city-owned parking lot and to the land owned by Plaza 1006 Corporation in the commercial district. This agenda item is not limited to only these items, but shall include any and all necessary matter germane to reach an agreement amongst the parties to allow John Schaefer, a potential future tenant of Frank Tamburella's property at 822 Clear Lake Road, to construct a palapa/ gazebo for a future bar slash restaurant. Brad, your microphone's off.
I talk loud enough to... Uh, this is a follow-up on an item that was brought up from last meeting, and it generated some questions that required us to gather in some additional information, and I'd like to ask that Mr. Tamburella and Mr. Schaefer come to the mic at this time to kind of address council's concerns and questions. Did I catch you off-guard?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I was just being attentive, got a blind text going on at the restaurants, I was a little late.
You're good.
So, before you guys start, let, let me preface that, Brad, with the fact that we did have a meeting with these gentlemen, along with our attorney. Uh, Angie was in that meeting, Alex was in that meeting, so everybody was there, there was no, I mean, we're going to meet with the mayor and see what we can get done. We, we had a meeting with all concerned parties on how we could work through this, and, and I believe, when they're finished talking, Alex probably has quite a bit to add to this, because there were a lot of questions that were answered in that meeting. Dick had put a preliminary draft of how we're going to word this. Those guys got a copy of it today, as a matter of fact. Um, and, and this is a mutual agreement. Uh, there's already something there, and we talked about this in the Plaza 10. This coincides with what's going on at Plaza 10 and that right-of-way up at 822. Uh, with that, I'll let you guys speak, and then, uh, I would expect Alex to speak after that.
Okay, well, so, uh, since the last meeting, uh, there's quite a bit happened over at that location, um, in that meeting that we had, which was a very collaborative meeting. Lasted about two hours, it was a really good meeting. Um, we decided to actually get the right-of-way survey. So out of our pockets, Frank and I went and got the survey, which I think Alex has there. I don't think it's, there's a copy of it being put on the TV, is there?
It should be in our packet, yes.
There it is, right there. So, this is actually the most recent survey that happened about three or four days ago, and you can see where the property line is for the building that was in question, where the palapa's going to be. You can see the existing deck that Soul Freak had already built. You can see where the sidewalk is, vegetation and whatnot. Part of the question was, okay, if we do this, if the city of Clear Lake Shores grants us, what does it look like? What's in the ground? You know, is there gas there, water there, electric? All we found was a telecom line, and I've got a bunch of my friends in the telecom business. Typically, when you put telecom in the ground, it's sleeved, which means the cables are running between a two- and three-inch pipe that actually have pull strings on both sides, so if there's ever a need to have to pull cable again, whatever side of that pipe you're on, that sleeve, you pull. So, from a position, from, from a standpoint of, I guess, having to do construction over the right-of-way, I would think it'd be a very minimum, um, probably very infrequent to have to come in and dig up the ground, tear up the palapa and all that, so that was a big question we had. Outside of that, now that we know exactly where things stand, um, it's a matter of putting the agreement together with the city, which has been extremely, uh, easy to work with at this point, everything's going really well. Um, there are probably some questions about the, uh, I guess would be the agreement that we're going to have, um, but outside of that, um, we met with, uh, the permanent department, plan department, we have a great plan there. Um, we are very, 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 very aware of the situation we're in with FEMA, and, you know, a lot of you don't know me very well, I can be a bit of a hothead, but on this one, um, we really need to work together, because being a part of that national flood program is imperative. And the reason why I say that is, I've had to shop the public market for insurance. It does not exist. Down here, Seabrook and Kima, it doesn't exist. So I don't want to do anything to jeopardize that situation. So, moving forward, I just want to be very clear, there's not going to be a lot of hanky panky stuff going on, and tearing out the inside of the building, and not building the codes and this and that. We've had very extensive meetings on that, um, to the point where Scott and I are, we get on the phone, and we talk for 30 minutes about hunting and fishing and everything else, and, you know, then it turns into business, and it's like, okay. So, just want to be clear on that, from my perspective, and how this is going, so what you can expect from me. It's not going to be the most beautiful thing on the inside, because there's a lot of stuff we can't do, but it will be extremely functional, and I think you're going to enjoy it once we get it up and done.
Would kind of like to highlight too, there was a drain that was identified under that drain.
There is.
Under that deck, and Mr. Schaefer has amicably agreed to create access that we would not have to have any destruction to get to that if needed to maintain it.
Yeah, we're actually going to, so, with, with, I'm glad you thought that, Brad, I forgot about that. So, right kind of in the middle, um, almost dead in the middle of that deck right there is a, is a, is a storm drain. And we're going to go ahead and create a system, when we, when we make the deck, there's going to be a hinge that comes up towards the handrail, that's probably, I don't know, we'll, we'll figure out where it needs to be, probably a three-by-three or a four-by-four, something like that, so if the city has to get into that drain, we can actually lift the deck up, and they get access. So, we're willing to work with everybody on that.
Uh, he, he pretty much, he pretty much said everything that I wanted to say, but, uh, the lo, the main thing I'm concerned about is the, uh, the liability part of it, and, uh, Dick said that, you know, if, uh, somebody were to fall and hurt themselves, you know, they would, uh, they would, I would be in the lawsuit, even if they were walking, if they, they were coming from Oakies or going to Oakies. So I was a little concerned about that, and I would, uh, I'd like to have some kind of a, uh, something written in the contract that, you know, Oakies will assume the liability of the, uh, the walkway. Just the walkway, that's all I'm asking. But, uh, other than that, you know, as long as it's lit up, you know, and, um, maintained, I think it would be fine with me.
I think, I think we, even in Plaza 10, we put some money in Plaza 10 for lighting back there. There is some light, but, but we have money to do that, and we have planned on doing that to light it up, so that's coming too, if this deal does go through. So, I would just say that, um, the logistics of that contract would probably be something that, that I would suggest, that if council was ready to move forward with this, we allow your attorney and our attorney to work out their attorney talk in writing, and then both parties would sign that. I think the main thing is, do we want to move forward with this? Where are we at with this? Um, I feel like after that meeting, we pretty much covered all bases, and, uh, the only reason I see anything being done in that right-of-way moving forward is if something were to happen and we needed to add to it or get to it. So, the way, the way that wording's always going to be, Frank, is that we have access to it if we need it. There's only one thing down there, and, and like John said, it's a fiber optic line. After talking to Alex, I don't know what we would need that right-of-way for, but we can only loan it to you, so to speak, but we can't give it to you or sign it over to you, so that wording is going to always say, if we need to tear that deck up, we can. That doesn't mean that's going to happen. It means that if something major happens and we have to get in there, we can. Brad and I were looking at the most we'd have to do in there with that drainage, is suck that drain out every now and then, like we do around some of the other ones on the island, and if we make that access, we feel pretty comfortable. You can take that grate out, get a sucker truck on the side of the building and access it without doing any damage to anything over there. But, but you never know what's going to happen in the future with any more utilities coming in, or relocating a line, and that, that wouldn't be us doing that. That would be a utility company doing that. But I'm pretty comfortable that we're not going to have to do much in there at all. I mean, wouldn't you say, Alex?
Yeah, I don't think there's any major utility likely to go through there.
Also, where you're going to put the sidewalk, you plan on, I guess you would have to check and see if there's any utilities, or water lines, or gas lines going, uh, under there, in case it, if there needed to be, we'd have to tear the sidewalk up. It'd be the kind of the same.
I'm sure we'll call 811 before we do anything and get it marked. I don't, I don't suspect there's much under there, but we'll, we'll see if there is.
Well, you're talking about the sidewalk out here?
No, no, in the back of my, my building.
Yeah, no, well, see, that would fall on us. If we have to tear it up, we're paying for it, so we would have to put it back.
Yes.
Actually, it's a little bit different, but yes, if we needed to get under there for some reason, or anybody needed to.
Or I did, yeah.
Yeah. You'd have to come up. It would have to come up. But I don't think there's anything in there that I know of. I mean, I, I don't even see a drain going back towards that parking lot from there.
Um, I, one change from the previous, um, palapa design is this new one moves the support columns back to within their property line. It does have a cantilever over the right-of-way, which is the existing deck, but that, that simplifies a lot of future issues too, because we're not permitting them to construct something inside the right-of-way. I mean, it's overhanging, but it's, it's better.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Absolutely. I'm not going to read it all again, so I'm going to just say that, uh, I'm making a motion to approve, uh, item number 10, uh, A, for, uh, the, uh, paragraph there.
I'll second that.
Okay. One, one thing I would say is, this doesn't talk about the language between the attorneys, so I, I would probably amend my motion to give Brad the authority, along with Dick, to negotiate that contract with Frank. You know, if you're going to approve this concept, that's fine, but I would, I would give him the power to do that outside of councils, so, councils, so they could get together and work out those details.
Okay, I kind of thought that was already in there, but, all right, so I will amend my motion to approve, uh, item 10A, and, uh, with the stipulation that, uh, Brad, uh, and the attorneys, uh, do have the, uh, authority to, uh, negotiate as, uh, necessary, uh, to come up with a, um, an agreement.
Awesome.
And I'll second that.
All right, got a motion by Rick, got a second by Ed. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimous. Uh, item number 11, uh, A, authorize city administrator to enter into a master service agreement, uh, with Collier, Collier Engineering for Clear Lake Shores engineering needs. Brad?
Yes, sir. A, a meeting or two ago, I made an announcement that we went out for RFP, or, excuse me, RFQ for an engineering firm. Uh, we have selected one that we're recommending to council for approval tonight. Uh, I would like to recognize, uh, Collier Engineer Anguero Benavides, did I say it correct? He, he is out of the Houston office, and will be our primary engineering contact, so we'll probably see him around a lot, but what I'm looking for tonight is council authorization for me to enter into this agreement. At this time, it does not contribute, uh, or, uh, commit us to anything financially, but it does allow me to engage their services for any engineering needs the city may have.
I will motion to authorize the city administrator to enter into the master services agreement with Collier Engineering.
Second.
Got a motion by Alex, got a second by Rick. Is there any discussion on this?
Just so you guys know what, what this is for, this is to give Brad the ability to use their services to help consult and develop plans for any ideas, say, I don't know, I'm not going to use the P-word, but, you know, a slab of concrete somewhere that's flat with paint on it, or a sidewalk, or, or the pedestrian bridge, or a road project. It gives us, you know, someone who's probably a better fit than, than our previous, uh, engineers for small, small projects, to help move those forward. Uh, so that's, that's what we're trying to do, and this was driven by roads and drainage, asking Brad to go and look for additional engineers.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Um, next item is, um, item B, discussion of possible action regarding town center special, uh, ordinances. Alex Scanlon.
All right, this is, uh, I'll motion to discuss a possible action, or, I'll motion to discuss the town center special ordinances.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, I, I put this on here with, with possible action, probably, probably was a misstep, because it's, it's so early in here, but lo, long story short, if you look in your packet, there's a, a whole stack of stuff, and, you know, y'all can see this. Uh, we have a section of ordinances that were written in 2010, a long time ago, um, in parallel with the town center master plan and the renderings, and I'm sure everyone's familiar with all of that. And it was a good idea, but we all know that's not what materialized out, out front. We have some other derivative, which is okay, you know, it's, it's, it's fine, it's, it's great, but these ordinances do not really work for what we have out there very well, and they conflict with our existing ordinances. I'll use parking, the hot button topic, was not the P-word I was talking about earlier. But the other P-word, parking, i, th, these ordinances say you can follow these ordinances that we have, or if the person who has the authority, which is Brad, as defined in this stack of papers, can do whatever he wants. Um, that's, that's basically the gist of it, and that happens for a lot of things in here, which, which is okay, and that was a good, good purpose before, right? It helped us develop that, it allowed that to happen. Um, but then, over time, as the town center didn't materialize, we had a town center review board, which in 2019 was disbanded because they weren't doing anything, because there, well, there was nothing to do, as we, we can see, we've got two parking lots, which again is fine, but it didn't really work. So I put this on, um, on here as kind of a precursor to the next item, which is, I think these ordinances need to be revised. Um, I think a lot of them can be suspended, um, or eliminated, and I think other ones should be integrated with the ordinances we have now, like the parking ordinance, that one specifically. That should be looked at, what's the town center parking ordinance? What is the Clear Lake Shores parking ordinance? Let's evaluate that and get one ordinance that we actually follow and use it, instead of having two that really are, are unusable. Because one says, has a bunch of restrictions that is not reasonable, and the other one doesn't have any restrictions at all, which, you know, makes you question, why is, why is it even there? So, I just wanted to bring that up and, uh, express what I was looking at doing. Um, you know, I've talked with Randy and Brad and, um, business owners around, and, and, you know, Kima over at Skipper's, and everybody knows there's a parking problem, so I'm, I'm working on it, and I just encourage you to read this, maybe read through the, at least some of it to familiarize yourself, so in the next few months, when it comes up, you'll, it won't just be like, you know, ha, having to read a novel and make a decision on it, so. That, that's all I had, I don't know if you'll have any specific questions on it, I don't expect you will, but, um, that was the purpose of this agenda item.
Anybody want to ask Alex any questions about that?
Yes, what are you looking forward to do tonight, to do anything? Do you just want to bring it up as a discussion item, or are you looking to actually, uh, move forward with something?
Well, originally, I was going to suggest that we just suspend this second set of ordinances, but I don't think that makes sense either, because that would put kind of a stop to anything that Brad needs to make happen, say for, for John and his, his new restaurant there, so that doesn't make sense. So, I don't think we need to take any action. Um, I think we can, but, just, just to put it on the table, it'll be an old business over the next couple meetings, and hopefully we can get to some resolution on it. I'm going to bring forward suggestions, so I'll, I'm going to do a lot of the legwork for it, um, based on our, the next item on the agenda, hopefully.
Okay. We're going to discuss another item? We'll move on? Um, discussion of possible action to commission a parking study for the town center. I think this kinda goes along with what you were just talking about.
Right, so thi- this does, e- exactly. Um, we had Wagner, I believe, uh, the EDC did a, did a parking study, and they looked at it without looking at any of these ordinances that conflict with each other. They just looked at what's available, what do the businesses need. They, they did a good job. It was not, not a wasted effort, but it didn't evaluate how our current businesses and our current ordinances align with each other, and how they comply or they don't comply, what the issues are. So what I would like, uh, to ask council to do tonight is to approve, um, a not to exceed amount for Brad to contract, um, possibly with, with our new engineering group here, or someone else if that's not something they specialize in. I, I think they, they do though, to evaluate our existing businesses, the existing parking spots, um, for existing lots, not, not, not the future Harper property that may or may not be a, available parking spot. Not, well, we could change the Aspen Road to have parking on both sides, just what is actually existing and what the actual businesses require based on our ordinances and see where we are. And then use that in combination with the Wagner, uh, studies to modify these ordinances. We have a parking ordinance that works, that makes sense, that can accommodate the existing businesses, that gives us a way to potentially allocate the parking spots that we have, um, and clear up a lot of that gray area that just, I mean, it just breeds turmoil in the city, right? It's just a constant issue, and, you know, we don't run out of parking very often, so it's not an insurmountable problem. Um, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Brad to commission a parking study, uh, based on the current ordinances and the currently available parking spots in the town center area in an amount not to exceed forty-five hundred dollars.
Alright, I'll second that.
Alright, we got a motion by Alex, got a second by Rick. Is there any more discussion? Santa, you're quiet. Alright, all in favor?
I was gonna say, I was just so curious, um, how much do you, uh, how much you think a study like that would cost, uh, if you, have you looked into it at all, or?
I have not looked into it.
Okay.
I think Wagner was in that.
Yeah, I was just saying, is that a pretty fair number? Okay, that, that was just, I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, I, I like the idea of doing it. I just wanted to sell it short and, uh, you know, have that, uh, I just wanna make sure that we're, you know, putting in a fair amount to, uh, be able to cover the cost on that.
I would think that's enough. Um, hope- hopefully it is. If it's not, I mean, Brad, if you could find that that's totally off, if you bring it back to us, we can adjust it. And that, this will come out of, I think, other contractual services, um, is the line item we were looking at in the budget, which we've allocated for.
You're smiling. I see you. Is that correct? Is that where it's coming from? I'll budget a minute. Cheryl will agree with that.
Johnny, if we can go on, yeah, there you go, thank you.
I'm not very loud either. So I don't know if that'll give you enough time to figure out the cost, but, um, you know, if it's done before we make the agenda, we can put it on there. So now we're trying to get away from the not to exceed and, uh, actually approve contractual stuff, so.
Just kinda putting back a thought, I'll probably, and be having discussions with our new engineering firm on the possibilities, so hopefully we can put that as top four priorities on getting a nu- budget number to look at.
And so it's not delayed, we can always choose to do a not to exceed during the meetings.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimous. Um, moving on, um, discussion of possible action to set a date for a possible strategic plan evaluation workshop. Alex Scanlon.
Oh, forgot about this one. I remember writing it. It feels like a long time ago. Um, so, we have new council members, we have, um, on here. We did a strategic workshop. When was that? Was that in the summer of, I think it was in twenty, twenty twenty-two, in June of twenty twenty-two?
It was just last year, yes.
It's been eighteen months. We had just come out of COVID. We did a strategic plan. I didn't feel like it really did anything but add more line items to the existing strategic plan that had been getting added to for a long time. I don't feel that it aligns very well with the actual direction the town center has gone or is going. And I, I thought I'd bring it up and see if council was interested in perhaps doing a, another one, rather, rather than waiting, I don't know, two or four years, which is how long we normally do. Uh, we brought in a consultant last time. I'd suggest we bring in someone different, or we do it in-house. I, I don't know what that looks like, but it's something I'd like to maybe have council task Brad with to eval- reevaluate the strategic plan.
I, I would recommend bringing somebody in that outside of experience doing these and keeping them in line. I think it would be more productive, but we'll definitely look at, I've known some other options out there.
So I don't know if we need a motion for that, to give Brad direction if council chooses to do that. Um, I, I guess I can make a motion to ask Brad to look, to Brad, or the city administrator to look into, um, a str- a strategic plan workshop with council in the next three or four months.
Yeah, I think you can make a motion to let him go forward and find that person.
That was my motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion by Alex, got a second by Ed. Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimous. Moving on to the next one. Um, authorize city administrator to enter into a one-year service agreement with GovOS to monitor the short-term rentals. Brad got it?
It's one of them topics that everybody loves to discuss, so please refrain from any violence at the moment. Uh, this is something that we have been in discussions since my day one here. Uh, everybody knows the challenges that short-term rentals, affectionately known as STRs, uh, they present for us. Number one, we don't have the staff, so we're looking to find a solution that we can better manage our STRs and, and kinda meet in the middle. Uh, we have found a company called GovOS. Uh, one of the, one of the challenges with STRs is, number one, identifying those operating as STRs out there. There are over thirty-plus different sites that these, uh, people can register at. It's impossible for us to do. It is also, uh, th- these STRs are getting smart, these property management companies and what they're doing. It used to be they would list it up there, and you'd have your address, exterior pictures, and internally, we could track down and find out who they were. Well, now they've gotten smarter, taking the exterior photos off, and the addresses off, so you don't know where they're located at other than a zip code until they actually, and you make a booking. That's when you get an address. So it's impossible for us to, to administer internally. This company, uh, number one, they've got the, they've got the thirty-plus locations that they're monitoring, looking for. They also do reverse geocoding, so they've got a way that they can back in to find out exactly where those addresses are located at. Uh, one of the challenges, when you put in a zip code, we're picking up property that's unincorporated, that's in Kima, and it's not necessarily all within our area, so they can narrow it down within ninety-eight percent of those operating as STRs that are truly operating within our jurisdiction. Uh, one of the challenges is we've got, uh, hot funds, and I'm gonna hold off on putting a specific amount out there, but, uh, the, the hot funds are restricted on what they can actually be used for, and if I'm off base, speak up. Uh, but the, the, we've get, do, do have funds there that will accommodate the service right now. Uh, the service is coming in at twenty-five thousand, a little bit over a little. Uh, so we do have the hot funds that can be utilized for that right now, and we're looking at a one-year trial period to see what, what we can do. Early discussions show that these revenues could potentially be, uh, dou- doubled, if not more. Uh, some of the challenges we were finding that we've got some properties that are underreporting, some of them that are operating without permits or losing permit fees. Uh, this company's gonna take care of a lot of this. They're gonna not totally pull it off of Angie's desk, and she does the majority of the work, so I'm not gonna take any credit for it up here. But, uh, one of the things is that, uh, the, the registration process, the collecting of the taxes, they're gonna handle all this for us. They're gonna identify those properties that are in violations, pa- report that, uh, pass that report off to us, where we'd make the decision, does this go to court, or what actions do we take, and, and start getting people to be a bit more compliant. Another avenue is that the law allows us, as a city, that anything that's within our ETJ that's close to us, that we can collect those sales taxes from them as well. This company's got that expertise that can, we can engage with them and provide a lot of these services. This still does not take away if we have anybody that's violating our ordinances. We still have to handle that internally within the city, whether it's myself or PD. So it doesn't totally take us off the hook, but it does take a big part of that work. My focus is, is getting that compliance that we're missing and getting that revenue that's we're missing. Uh, so I'm bringing it forward, uh, asking council for authorization for a one-year commitment, and then we'll reevaluate their services and find out if our return on investment's worth it or not. Sorry for rambling on, but I just kinda wanna give the big picture.
Oh, and there'd be some things that we can pick up from them too, as we go along. We can learn some things that maybe we can do in-house to save some money, and, and maybe we don't need all of their services moving forward.
Yeah.
Uh, I recommend that we approve item eleven E, authorize city administrator to enter into a one-year service agreement with GovOS to monitor short-term rentals.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion from Ed, got a second from, uh, Jeff. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I happened to be in the office when Brad was describing this at, I don't know, some other, other meeting event. Uh, one thing I really, I liked to hear from, from him was, this is a cost this year we didn't necessarily budget for. I, I don't remember exactly what the details were, but if we look at this year, we spent, say we spent ten thousand dollars on this, then next year, we're able to, we're able to budget or, or modify the short-term rental permit amounts based on the number we expect to cover the cost to operate. Because we can't just fee them out of existence, if you will. I asked that question, because, you know, that's an idea that's been pitched. Uh, we can't do that, but if we're paying a service that is expensive to help us regulate them because it is that much effort, then we have justification to bring those rates, the permit rates up or down, or whatever it takes, um, to kinda cover it in the future. So we're not just gonna have to eat this cost year after year after year.
Yeah, and while it was not the item that was budgeted through our budgeting process, the hot funds are hotel occupancy tax, uh, they are, those funds are designed to be used for putting heads in beds. They're, uh, they've got more leniency for those cities. They've got hotels and marketing and recruiting those events to bring people into your city. So that, while it was not budgeted, the funds are there that we're not having to go out and rob Peter to pay Paul and, and pull from something else. Correct, Cheryl? Thank you.
Well, and hopefully this will bring more of them into compliance where, you know, we're collecting a lot more of that money, and it will fund itself, along with bringing some more money to us.
Correct.
But rightfully so, we should be collecting anyway. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to, um, item F, uh, consideration and possible action to authorize filing of the annual eminent domain report. Um, this is Brad. It's the same thing that we talked about.
Yeah, you handled that so well in Plaza Ten. I'll let you explain it here.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
No, it's, it is just something that is mandated up on cities to, uh, to bring forward every year to, uh, retain that powers to be, if you would ever need to exercise eminent domain. Uh, anybody that's been following the state, eminent domain is very difficult anyways, so we probably, we're not gonna wanna use it, but it is there should we need to, and, and to be compliant, we need to file this report annually. And I'll defer to legal if I misstated anything.
Okay, we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion, we approve, uh, the filing of the annual eminent domain report with the state.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion by Jeff, got a second by Ed. Any discussion, any questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimous. I almost said we have one opposed. Okay, uh, item G, authorize the city administrator to schedule repairs to the city hall lift and authorize payment for the proposed estimate of five thousand forty-nine dollars and nine cents.
So our lift, which was installed in two thousand sixteen, had a two-year warranty, went out in two thousand eighteen. Currently, this is our handicap accessible lift. It does not, it will take you up and down, but when you, number one, you from the outside, you cannot recall the lift come down, and it also, you have to manually open the door. This five thousand forty-nine will auth- us repair, authorize us to repair the automatic door opener, as well as the recall lift and perform preventive maintenance on it, so we can ensure that it's gonna remain, uh, good for us.
All motion to approve the five thousand forty-nine dollars and nine cents to repair the lift.
I'll second it.
Motion by Alex, got a second by Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Moving on to, uh, item H, authorize the city administrator to enter into an agreement to have three new cameras installed on the back of the side of the city hall underneath the new canopy as an ARPA fund purchase in the proposed amount of six thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars and four cents inclusive of the licensing.
So we've got a very nice canopy installed. We're loving it. Thank you for council approving that. However, we moved our PD units back there, and there is no camera protection on the backside of that facility. We're, I'm proposing that we install three of them, two of them that's gonna cover both ends of the canopy, the vehicle area, and a third one on the back door for those coming in and out of the building. Uh, if anything, this could potentially go down. There was mentioned there is license fee built into that. If we look at our cameras, which I'm working with Chief Donaldson on, if we identify three that are not needed, we can pull those off and free up those licenses and reduce that fee by a little. It's about two hundred dollars per license, so it could come down just a little bit, but it will not exceed that with three new cameras installed.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we, uh, authorize administrator to enter, uh, to the agreement to have the three new cameras, uh, installed in backup city hall for the amount of six thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars and four cents inclusive of li- inclusive of the license. I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion by Rick, got a second by Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Moving on to, uh, item I, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven, an ordinance by the city council of Clear Lake Shores, Texas, amending chapter fifty of the Clear Lake Shores municipal code by repealing and reserving article two in its entirety, including sections fifty dash nineteen through five dash twenty-three regarding the juvenile curfew ordinance, providing for a repealer clause, providing for severability, providing for repealing savings clause, providing for an effective date, and providing for any opens meeting act clause. I know this is under me, but I'm gonna let you tell us what happened there. The legislative bodies changed that, didn't they not?
Yeah, yeah, yes, it changed, uh, the House bill, uh, cities can no longer, uh, are allowed to be, uh, allowed to enforce juvenile curfews except for, uh, in, uh, emergency situations where the mayor can go in and make a declaration, and then if that emergency, uh, has to be continued for some reason, the council can approve an extension.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Alright, well, I'll make a motion that, uh, we repeal ordinance, uh, twenty twenty, uh, three dash eleven.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Rick, got a second by Alex. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Um, brings us down to item J. Approved belt hairs, pet check, paycheck, and certified public accountant's engagement letter for a single audit services provided for fiscal year twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. The fiscal year twenty twenty-three was twenty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-five, and fiscal year twenty twenty-four is twenty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Brad?
Feel like I've been hogging the mic all night. I'm gonna defer to Cheryl and let her take this one. Tag, you're it.
Yeah, so this is just a matter of formality on the, uh, for the auditors. We have to enter into, uh,
enter into, uh, you know, the agri- these agreements for these fiscal years. Uh, we do it every two years, so this, this is all that is, is, um, just engaging them, uh, re- or renewing their, um, engagement letter to audit fiscal twenty twenty-three, which ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and fiscal twenty-four, which will end September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Is this a budgeted item?
Yes, it is.
I'm just asking.
Yes, this has been, yes, yes.
I'm just teasing.
Yes, it's budgeted.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, item J.
All second.
Okay, got a motion by Ed, got a second by Alex. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Uh, moving on to, uh, item K, approve renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, Texas for employee health care twenty twenty-four. Brad?
Thank you for that, Cheryl. Appreciate you. It's great having a wonderful team around me. Uh, this item here was actually approved financially within our budget back in October. This is just having us renew the contract January one with Blue Cross Blue Shield for employee health benefits. Uh, the increase this year was four percent, which we're rather fortunate, because some of our neighbors were as high as twelve percent. So I think we've done a great job, and Blue Cross Blue Shield's taken good care of us.
Well, I'll make a motion. We approve, um, eleven K, the renewal with the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for employee health care twenty twenty-four.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Jeff, got a second by Rick. Any discussion on this item? All in favor? Motion passes. Um, brings us down to item I, approve renewal.